Now we have an audience that's here with us tonight, but we also have an audience that is watching us probably over the internet. And I want to say thank you and welcome. I'm State Representative Kevin Cameron. And we are here tonight to have, talk about the local economy and, or the economy in general and job creation in our local area and around the state and the country. I want to thank you, those of you that are here, as well as those of you that are watching on livestream. This is new technology. This is the first time that we have tried this to livestream a town hall. And we think it gives people an opportunity to participate in the process. As busy as people are in their lives today, they get home, they fix dinner. Those of us here probably didn't even have a chance to eat dinner. They fix dinner and they say, "Well, you know, I'm too tired or too busy. I can't go out." But I can sit at my computer and watch and participate online. We've had success with telephone town halls when we're having, you know, a thousand people that will be listening on the town hall. And we feel this is another way that people can be, become involved and give us their input as well as listen to what's going on in current. So I want to thank all of you that are here physically, as well as those that are in cyberspace with us tonight. It's great to have technology. I want to thank the Pringle Creek Community Center hosting us here in Painter's Hall, which is a unique building in the fact that it is a, I guess, a zero-energy-use building. It's an old building that's been redone. And if those of you who are watching online have never been out, I encourage you to come out and visit this community and the sustainability that has been developed out here. I want to thank Ray Burstead and Diane McLaren and Jason Brand for joining me tonight to offer their input. And we're here tonight because we have a topic that is not only impacted us here, local, in our local area, in our state, our nation, but also globally. And I have a globe here because, you know, we are a little speck on this globe, but today truly, the economy is a worldwide economy. And what we do here will make a difference as to whether we attract capital and investment from someplace else, not only in the United States, but in the rest of the world. And so we have to always kind of remember that we are an open global economy. We're here tonight about, though, to learn what's going on in our local community with, to help with job creation and bringing things here to our state. And we want to have ideas. We want to hear your ideas. We're not here tonight to cast blame as to why somebody may be in a specific situation, why the economy is down. We all know that. And I could cite, I could stand up here and cite all kinds of things, like our employment rate that just hit, again, 9.6. We all know that we're having a very difficult time. So we're here tonight to collaborate and share ideas and to help be a part of a solution to help our friends and our neighbors find work, create wealth, and raise the standard of living in the state of Oregon and in our local community. And I want to keep it in perspective because I think it was Ronald Reagan who said that it is a recession when your neighbor loses his or her job, but it's a depression when you lose your job. And I'm sure there's people in this room that have had both happen to them, whether it's their neighbor, friend, or relative that's lost a job, or some maybe that have lost their own job. So we want to be here to help all those that were, we're here to help. So I'd like to have, start off with maybe having each of our guests just speak about what they're doing, what their knowledge is of the local community, what they know is happening to help us. And we'll have some time for each one of them to share. And then we'll have some time for input from the audience. And then we'll close a little bit later on. So I want to thank you again for being here. And Ray, well, since you're on the other end of the table, we'll let you start and talk about SEDCOR and your role and what you're doing here in the local community.
Thank you, Representative Cameron. It's an honor for me to be here. I firmly believe in everything that Kevin has been working on in our legislature the last few years and have been closely associated with those efforts. SEDCOR, for those of you that don't know, is, turns 30 years old in January. We've been doing economic development in the Mid-Valley Valley for a long time. And these, though I've only been here six years, these are some of the most difficult times that we've had to face as an economic development entity. We do a lot of retention-expansion opportunities with local companies, industries that are already here. Our thought is that if we can keep the jobs we have, it makes the job of recruiting new industries into the economy easier. And, you know, I have to say from, for the most part, most of our industries, our metals industries, our food processing industries, the other core industries that support our local economy, are maintaining a fairly high level of employment. Some industries in the metal manufacturing industries are actually having difficulties finding some of the skill sets that they need for their workforce. But what really scares us is the next 10 years. The 10 years when a lot of these companies that have been in the valley for 50 and 60 years and have employees who have been with them for 30 and 40 years that are going to be retiring, that haven't transferred the knowledge that they have accumulated over the years in their, in their particular field down to the workforce that's coming up. We've had some industry leaders tell us that they may have to go out of business, that they won't be able to find workers to fill the positions that they will have 10 years from now. We certainly hope that isn't, isn't the case. And between the efforts of Diane's group and the other workforce training resource partners that we have, we hope that we're able to train those workers and make sure that they have a viable workforce from which to draw their employees. We have a program at SEDCOR called IMOM. It's an acronym for a way to train those, create the skills that those workers are going to need so that they can become a viable part of the economy that they're working in. My board has been constricted, you know? Everybody says that the answer is jobs. And then every time you listen to the TV, the media is always saying it's going to be a jobless recovery. I'm not sure I believe that. I think we're going to have to create jobs. And I think one of the problems that we're struggling with at SEDCOR and that my board has, has struggled with is, our mantra has always been that we want to recruit traded-sector jobs, jobs like the Sanyo jobs that pay $50,000 a year so people can buy homes and buy cars and buy groceries and go to the movies and do all the things that support the Chamber and the other organizations in town. But what we're realizing is, is that there are opportunities out there for lesser-paying jobs. And my board is struggling with what resources do we put out to try to attract those jobs to the Mid-Valley Valley? Well, we're, we're not throwing as many resources at those types of jobs as we would at the jobs for Sanyo, for instance, but we have come to the resolve in our board that any job is a good job. At this time, with 9.6% of our people unemployed, you could make the statement, "Well, 90% of the people are employed." But that 10% that are unemployed are in serious trouble. And we need to do all we can to help them. We have a couple of opportunities. We have a company that we're working with right now that is looking at a large number of jobs out in the state and area. But they're going to be low-paying jobs. And my board is, as I said, was conflicted on what, what SEDCOR should do to make that project come to be. And we put a lot of work into it. And we're working with the state and other resource partners. We think that even though they're low-paying jobs, that number of jobs in our economy today are going to be what helps starts to bring us out of this recession that we're in. It hasn't been a terrible two years for SEDCOR and for our resource partners. We do an annual report to our board. And in the last two years, we have facilitated through our resource partners, the Chameca Center for Business and Industry and Job Growers and our other workforce development folks at the state, over 485 jobs in the Mid-Valley Valley have been created through programs that SEDCOR has been directly involved with, along with about $180 million in capital investment. So even though the economy's been struggling, we have had some local expansions. Garmin's expanded. We've got the new Home Depot facility that's open now. So we think the, excuse me, jobs are the answer. We just have to decide how we're going to get those jobs to, to our area.
Thanks, Ray. I want to also thank, I forgot to mention that we are being filmed by CCTV tonight. And Mark, thank you for you and your staff being here. Hopefully this will get replayed somewhere along the line and people will learn and will get to share this throughout the community. And I think, Jason, we had you next on the list to share about what the Salem Chamber is going to be doing, or from their perspective, what needs to change or remain the same, and what are the future trends that business can anticipate here in, in the community?
Sure. Well, first I want to thank you, as Ray did, for the opportunity to speak tonight and just starting the conversation, which is one that frankly, we can't have enough. There's trying times out there for a number of employers and people looking for work. And it's up to us as community leaders to step up to the plate and make things happen. And solutions aren't easy to come by, frankly, because it's not a problem that's specific to our region. It's something that is plaguing our entire nation. And so we really need to make sure that we're working together and partnering and collaborating. So on that note, just want to thank Ray and Diane, too. More specifically, Ray at SEDCOR and the work they've done for the last 30 years is extremely important for our region. And we have to find ways as a, as a Chamber of Commerce and with all the other resource partners that, that Ray and their Board of Directors have at SEDCOR, to make sure that we're lining up together, you know, forming those partnerships and collaborations and building upon the strengths that we have as organizations to capture opportunities and seize opportunities. So just want to, you know, Ray and I work really well together on a personal level and just want to, you know, see that continue. And as it relates to Diane, I'm not sure many people know this, but I'm one of their biggest fans simply because of the outcomes. And outcomes speak louder than anything. And they are the number one small business development center in the entire state based on the amount of jobs they create. And so we need to, we need to talk that up. As a community, we have the number one small business development center. And that's something to feel really proud about. And so how can we continue building upon that success and be even better partners and collaborators with Diane and her team at Chameca? So as it relates to the Chamber, Ray mentioned earlier that, you know, the organizations that are there to support businesses have remained strong. You know, we're fortunate to have a really strong team of people that work on a daily basis for business members that are out there in the community. We actually have 1,200 members as a Chamber of Commerce, which makes us one of the larger chambers in the state. And we're completely privately funded. So sometimes people think a Chamber of Commerce is part of the government. You know, the Chamber of Commerce is a 501(c)(6) organization. It's here for private sector business owners and managers to support them as employers and creating jobs for Oregonians. And so from that perspective, we see a number of things that we really need to take a close look at as a community and as a state. Like Kevin asked, you know, what are some of the things we see that need to change? Frankly, we need to take a really close look at our minimum wage formula. Right now, we are robbing youth of the opportunity to get that first job. And something needs to be done about that. If, if you're unfamiliar with the statistic, there's about 35% of our youth that are 18 years of age or younger that are actively looking for work that cannot get their first job. 35% unemployment rate. And that to me is unacceptable. And, you know, there's a lot of other arguments that go against, you know, that are good arguments for why we should not have the highest minimum wage in the nation, which we will have as of January 1st. There's a lot of jobs out there that do not provide the return on investment for a minimum wage that's going to be as high as Oregon's. And so if, if the job that you want to hire someone to do doesn't provide the return on investment at that hourly rate, then why would you ever create that job? And that's something we really have to have a serious conversation about. Also, as it relates to our youth, they're competing with people that have had three or four jobs already. Because these people can afford to support themselves, or in some instances, even family, on a minimum wage pay scale. And so how are we going to, how are we going to provide an opportunity for our kids at 16, 17 years of age to get that first job and develop that work ethic and contribute to society if they're, if they're competing with other people that have actually already had three or four jobs? So would really love for us as a team, as a community, as Oregonians that care about our future, to take a close look at minimum wage and what we need to do to change the way it's currently constructed. Also, another issue is our capital gains tax rate. If you don't know already, we have the highest capital gains tax rate in the entire nation. And so that's the rate that we charge people when they're creating wealth in our state. And I would make the argument that we don't want to do everything we can to tell people to go elsewhere with their wealth. We want to do everything we can to have them come here to Oregon and, and invest their wealth in our state and provide opportunities and create jobs for Oregonians. So there's not a lot of strategy in having frankly, the highest capital gains tax rate in the nation. To me, it's a very short-sighted. And I hope that, you know, as a state, we can see the bigger picture and the long-term vision for why a more competitive capital gains tax rate is so important to our future success. And a couple of things that, you know, I think are going really well, we have a very competitive workers' compensation system in our state. You know, we're, you know, we have some of the lowest rates in the entire nation. So our workers' compensation system is working really well. Maybe there's some things from that, the, you know, state employees that work so hard and the state agencies that are involved with our workers' compensation system. Maybe there's some opportunities to look to those people for solutions in some of the other arenas that we're having more challenges in. And another great thing about Oregon, too, you know, we have some of the most creative and entrepreneurially-minded people in the entire nation. And there's a number of studies that have been done about really, really innovative thinkers that exist in this state. So let's create an environment that allows them to embrace their creativity, create jobs, create their own businesses, and create, most importantly, wealth and prosperity for our state. Because job, a job is one thing, but if we can, if we can turn that job into wealth and prosperity for others, it's, it's something entirely different. And something that's good for everyone in our state. Also, Kevin asked me to mention a few trends that we see as a Chamber of Commerce. One of the things I thought I'd just mention here, you know, back in the heyday of Chambers of Commerce, we've been around for 125 years, believe it or not, just here as a Salem-area Chamber of Commerce. And I got these glasses from a small business owner here in Salem. And, you know, maybe 125 years ago, that person that was selling those eyeglasses was selling to people just within the city limits of Salem. And that's certainly not the case now. The person I bought these glasses from has an extremely successful business in downtown Salem, and she sells her glasses across the globe. So it's not really a future trend, it's more of a current trend. One of the things we need to continue doing as a business community is providing opportunities to have discussions about how really our world and our profits as business people to continue gaining wealth and, and creating opportunities for jobs is all about helping business owners realize that their customers and clientele and their market extends far beyond the boundaries of any city. It extends to all corners of the globe. And so the lady that sells glasses in downtown Salem, she actually is successful because she's embraced a market strategy that involves selling internationally to clients around the world. And we need to share that story with more small businesses. So that's a current trend, but something that also needs to be embraced by more businesses in the future. Also, you know, there's all this talk about technology and, you know, Kevin mentioned that there's people probably watching tonight online. I was almost tempted to chime in when you were talking because I'll bet there's some people watching this online while they're watching the World Series on their TV, right? Like at the same time.
What's the score?
So that's the beauty of technology. And I think one of the future trends we'll see is, right now, there's a lot of innovation going into apps on smartphones. You know, seven out of every 10 new phones that are, that are purchased right now are smartphones. So your iPhones, your Motorola's with your Android markets on them, your BlackBerry phones. So those smartphones have a whole new world of entrepreneurial activity on them. And so as people are moving to mobile apps and selling and trading and doing business and commerce, you know, in the comfort of their own jacket pockets, that world will continue to expand. And it's frankly, going to be really fascinating in the next five to 10 years to see how much more competition actually is created within that world. So right now, you know, I have a certain amount of apps on my smartphone, but you know, sooner rather than later, you're going to have a plethora of apps that compete against each other, that are more relevant than others. And it's, it's going to be fascinating to see that whole world emerge. Right now, we're in the process as a Chamber of unveiling a mobile app that will allow people in our community to carry around Chamber members in their pocket. They'll know who's a member of the Chamber. But, you know, how long will that be relevant before we need to create a brand-new app? Because people aren't just, they won't use it anymore because something else is easier to use, maybe something that Google provides, for example. So, you know, realizing that a move to a certain technology doesn't just stop there, there's a whole new world within that, is something that will be a future trend. Also, you know, something we can take pride in as a state is the fact that we're a leader as it relates to alternative energy. You know, SEDCOR had a great success in bringing Sanyo Solar to Salem. And that's something we can all be proud of. And the fact that the state is seen as an alternative energy leader. But we need to remain focused on the industries that have brought our community to where it is today, like food processing and food manufacturing. Everyone needs to eat, right? And we have some of the best soil in the entire world. So let's not lose sight of that. Let's make sure we have a business climate that supports those employers that make those jobs possible. So just a couple of thoughts from us.
Thanks, Jason. It's great to talk about the technology. And I was just wondering if you needed those glasses to see this globe?
I actually do.
Find Oregon.
Yeah, it's the fine print is, yeah, I can see better with.
Wait till you get to my age and need even thicker ones. Diane McLaren is here from Chameca, and the, she's going to talk to us a little bit about what her role is in probably a lot of retraining and people who are unemployed where they need resources to find, to increase their skills so that they can find those jobs when they are, and be available for those jobs when they come available. So Diane, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Well, I do work for the Chameca Center for Business and Industry, which is part of Chameca Community College. And our president, Cheryl Roberts, has been focusing on, you know, the way that we provide education and the connection it has to businesses. So we're really fortunate that she sees great value in the work that we're doing. So I wanted to touch on some ways that Chameca is preparing the workforce for the future and what we're doing currently for the current workforce. So, you know, when the recession happened, we saw a surge in enrollment at Chameca, as well as other community colleges around the state of Oregon. This year, we saw a slight decrease. We were down 4% in enrollment from last year. And there may be a variety of reasons for that. But what we're looking at is, you know, what are the new, the industries that will be growing in the next few years? And are we preparing those students that are going to college right now to take those jobs? Some of the new programs that I, I wanted to mention that are, that are new this year are dental hygiene, health informatics, you know, the way health services has to do record-keeping is very different now, and so we have this new program. Hemodialysis pharmacology and phyto-technology, which I have learned is the use of plants to mitigate adverse environmental impacts. So, you know, not of all, all of our programs at the college are two-year degree programs. We have many programs that are also one-year certificates, or take less than a year to get a certificate. And completion is a very important thing. I know in the legislature, that's what they're talking about, getting students to complete either a certificate or a degree. One of the things also that will be new at Chameca Community College is a career center. And we will be opening that up this fall with full-time staff. And what that is going to do is going to be that liaison between students that are in programs at the college and businesses, and helping them find jobs and tracking those students of where they go, helping them get on the right track and what kind of education they need to get a job, a certain job in a certain business or industry. So this is a really, a really great thing that we're looking forward to opening this fall. Now let me talk a little bit about what we do at the center. We do workforce training. And so really what we're doing is skilling up the current workforce. We work directly with businesses who may come to us and say, "We need our employees better skilled in a certain area." Here's some of the things that they're asking for. Certainly workplace Spanish, all the time. For many, many businesses, we're offering, how do you communicate better and bridge that language barrier? Business and technical writing. They're asking for leadership and communication, supervisory skills, conflict management, safety, computer software. And now, of course, we're seeing a lot of the Green Series, green kinds of trainings. In fact, we worked recently with our local workforce investment board, Job Growers, to help us fund a training called the PV Entry Level Training, which is about installing solar panels. It's actually not installing them themselves, but knowing the basics of the electricity and, and how to hook them up and all of that. This training had a value of about $1,500 per person, and Job Growers covered that. We had unemployed people taking this training, hoping to find a job in the solar field. We had employed people because they want to branch out into that industry. I had 40 people register for this class, which was really a very well-attended class. And because it was so successful, we're offering it again in December. And so I'm taking registrations now, getting ready, getting people ready for installing solar panels. As it was mentioned, Sanyo Solar is located here in Salem. And a couple of years ago, we worked with SEDCOR and Ray's group to do the workforce training for Sanyo employees. So as they were employed for Sanyo, we did a two-week training to get them ready to go to work for Sanyo. And those are the kinds of things that we do and the collaborations that we have with SEDCOR, Job Growers, and Business Oregon, too, to keep, to get better skills for employees. And also I wanted to mention that, well, Jason mentioned, our Small Business Development Center, that's also part of the Chameca Center for Business and Industry. And they are there to support existing businesses, help them to be more successful. And they do that through workshops. And I have to tell you, last year, we did about 1,600 hours of advising for about 600 clients. And all of that was offered at no charge. So a business owner can come in and say, "Look, I really need help with this and this." We can have personal advisors, meet with them, people that have been business owners themselves, who have the education and knowledge about owning a business, and advise them of the direction they need to go. And really, this is about job retention. You know, it is really important that our community take care of those existing businesses so they don't, they don't leave, they don't go out of business. And so we want to really take care of them. We see all kinds of businesses that come to us for support and workshops. I might also mention that we have a "Start Your Own Business" kind of opportunity as well. So people that maybe have become unemployed, we've, we've seen this surge in seeking self-employment, starting their own business. So what we can do is meet with them and take them through a series of classes and look at their idea. Is their idea feasible? Are they personally ready to start a business? Do, you know, what's their budget like? Is there a loan possibly available for them? There, and I will say, banks are lending, but they're very conservative right now. And a person, an individual who's looking at starting a business and needing financial support to do that, really needs to make sure they have good credit, they need to, you know, develop personal relationships with, with their bank. And that will all help towards starting this business. But what we do is we support them along the way with the, the learning that they need, the workshops. And we offer these throughout Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill counties. What are companies looking for? You know, we, and I'm sure Ray hears this as well, as well as Jason, some companies are going out of state to look for skilled workforce. I say, we can scale up our workforce here. But we have to have people willing, willing to go. But we have to have people willing, willing to go and get more education. And I'm not talking about a two-year degree necessarily. I'm talking, we, we offer short-term workshops where people can take advantage of that. And here's the critical skills. Computer skills, they're critical in just about every job um that you can have out there. You need to know something about computers. We offer community education classes on computer. Um so they're not, you don't have to take them for credit, but you can learn um how to operate certain software. Uh flexibility, people, uh businesses want someone who is multi-skilled. You know, who's flexible, that can do this kinda job, but also do a little bit of this. I don't think we're in an era right now where somebody is just they, businesses can't afford to have them be really siloed like that. They need them to do many things. They need to have writing skills. Um and uh work well with the team. We also offer classes in writing, um offer in pu- both in community ed and through our Small Business Development Center, so there's lots of opportunities. Uh critical thinking, very important. People that are bilingual. I was just talking to the chief of police yesterday. He said they've been trying to recruit police officers who are bilingual. They're having to go out of state to to recruit. Um and uh I know that other companies are doing the same. They need a clean background, people, uh a willingness to work. I um I did talk to someone at an employment agency today and um she said, um it's, if people show a willingness, an enthusiasm, that they're more likely to land a job. Um they need to know how to dress appropriately for the job. Dress appropriately when they go to the employment agency. And she suggested to me that people that are unemployed should register with all the staffing agencies, not just one. Don't pick just one, because that staffing agency is an advocate for you. And she uh said she has lots of jobs available right now. Now, some of them don't pay real well, some of them are temporary. But any kind of job that upgrades your skills is a stepping stone to maybe something better in the future. Um there's another opportunity is if you, if you can't find a job, do volunteer work. It keeps your skills honed. And it shows an employer that you are willing to step out there and do something, and it really shows up well on a resume. And you can also get references that way. Um be enthusiastic. I think I mentioned that. Even though you may take a job that is not your dream job, give it a hundred percent. And and it thinks could really open up. As the economy grows, as maybe positions open up within a company, they may move you up. You may find another job elsewhere. Um resources that are available. Well, there's financial aid. Um and I would have to say that people need to be patient um and plan ahead because financial aid is being, uh there's many, many people seeking financial aid. The other thing is that through JobGrowers, there's the the Workforce Investment Act uh di- adult and dislocated worker funds. So someone who, so if you have an idea of of a certificate that you would wanna get that's gonna lead you to a certain job, you need the certificate in order to get this job. They will help in funding your training. And uh you need to qualify, and it's through the WorkSource Centers that you would get that um that direction of of how to fill out those forms. Um so I would say um that there's, there are resources out there, and sometimes it just really takes knowing where to go. And certainly, I'm willing to, you know, take phone calls from people that don't know what to do next, you know, they're in a certain spot. Um I'm sure Jason and and Ray probably feel the same about, you know, we we wanna, we wanna help direct people to the right resources because there are many available out there.
Diane, thank you very much. Um I I think one of the things that uh as as your legislator, as a as the state representative that represents this area, to have these resources and and the professional people that represent these resources in our community, we are really blessed. And I I wanna share, yesterday I went out, I think it was yesterday, no, day before Tuesday, I went out to the Brooks, New Brooks Training Center for the public safety uh facility that Chamecada has just uh opened. And it's because of the people in this room that are watching uh on the bond that got passed. And so the, there are some good things and good resources being built in this community. The medical center that you mentioned, I got to tour that. If you haven't got a chance to go and see some of these new facilities that are state-of-the-art, of which bond money went in from the taxpayers, as well as a lot of private donations to help put some equipment in there. The partnerships that are happening within our community are amazing. Every day, it seems like I'm in a meeting. Uh not as a, not as a state, as a state legislator, but not with other state legislators, with people from the community that are collaborating, trying to take resources that we have available today to to get things done uh with less dollars than what we have. So as as the representative and being in the state, one of the things that I feel we're trying to do is to, first of all, is to live within our means. I think as a state, uh we have to um balance the budget with the existing revenues that we have. One of the things that's happening in the state from a public sector employee, you can see in in the trends, public sector employment is going down, and there's a little bit of private sector employment coming up. Well, the the trend, two years ago, the private sector employment was going down and public sector employment continued to grow. So there's there is a reversal in the trends where you're seeing employment happening. We know, I know as a legislator, and most of us know, that in order to have the revenues to support the public sector things that we need to support, i.e. the education systems and the the uh public safety systems, we have to have private sector job growth. So what can the legislature do um is to help find ways that will remove obstacles from uh private sector job growth. And so tonight, what I would like to do is maybe, maybe there's some of you here that are involved in uh a job or in in parts of the community that you may have some suggestions as to what you think uh solutions need to be that that uh uh any one of us, including myself, obviously, I'm here to listen to find out things that I can go back and and try to move forward. We'll be in session in February. It's our first, uh it's the first annual session, the second half of an annual session. Constitutionally, we're mandated to be back in February. It'll be a thirty-five day session, if not shorter. A lot of good, big policy will not be moved, but there may be some s- some things that we can go back and uh whether they're policy or we need to get with agencies. So if somebody has some questions tonight or some suggestions for any one of the four of us up here, we'd certainly like to entertain those and and hear from you this evening. And again, as I said, I wanna look for solutions. I I I think that's my job as a state representative is to find solutions and help implement those solutions and bring people together so that we can um move things forward where we need to. So I'd like to open it up for any questions or or thoughts you may have on where we need to go.
Question for Jason, uh just curious among chamber members that own businesses, Jason. What kind of uh uh feedback, what kind of stories are you hearing from them about their own business? Uh are they ahead in sales a little bit this year? Are they still dropping or where, where?
Appreciate the question. Uh it's really a mixed bag. We hold a, you know, it's really important. There's a lot of chambers of commerce that frankly, one chamber of commerce is one chamber of commerce. They all operate so differently depending on the type of board of directors you have. And in our chamber, we make sure that uh we meet with about ten to twelve of our members once a month over lunch. So we uh we uh bring in a catered lunch and we just, the whole hour is devoted to them giving us feedback about how their businesses are doing. So I can share some of that feedback from the last three months, so kinda hot-off-the-press type information. Some businesses are growing uh in town. So some have uh, some have defined their niche and are adding jobs and are improving their bottom lines, which is great to see. So there's, there are some success stories. The large majority are, I think, frustrated and maybe a little more emotional than they're, than they used to be because times are so tough. Um one of the things that I think has frustrated our our business members the most is the fact that they receive hundreds and in some cases thousands of resumes, all of which don't make the cut for even an initial screening to be considered for a job. And so that to me, and I've heard that unsolicited in multiple uh focus groups. So that to me tells me that we have this gap between the needs of employers and actual jobs that are available and people that are on unemployment and are either looking for jobs or maybe aren't looking for jobs. And I've heard some stories about that too in terms of our unemployment system and and uh maybe some reform that might be needed on that front, but that's a whole nother subject. But I would say it's a mixed bag.
Yes.
Probably raised this, I wanted to answer this, but as as you have a perspective, employers come to look at Salem the area, um what are the things that most often come up as uh stumbling blocks? Things that that make them not want to come to Salem?
The first thing that usually is brought forward, and and we faced this with uh Sanio, and and we thankfully had Diane and her team and the and the folks at WorkSource Oregon and the other folks that helped stepped in and and showed that we could do what we said to do. Workforce is number one. Um a lot of the higher-tech workforce uh has to commute. Uh right now, there's about twelve thousand people that work in Salem that commute every day from outside of Salem. A lot of those are high-tech jobs, some are state jobs. Uh but I think workforce is the number one thing. Um and then it, it, you know, it's really difficult because it's different for everybody. But having the available infrastructure, having the right amount of power that a company needs, having the right amount of sewer and water capacity, um having uh, you know, gas lines that'll support their needs and all those things are are critical components that we deal with early on in our discussions with the company or an industry. But having got local leaders that are willing to step up and really show the company or the individual or the industry that we can make things happen here in the Mid-Atlantic Valley. It's our greatest resource. Um you know, San- Sanio, for example, was looking at five other states when they chose Oregon. They were looking at three other areas in Oregon before they chose Salem. And the reason they chose Salem was because our county commissioners and our city councils and our state uh Oregon Business Development Department and from our governor on down were in singing the same song. We were saying, we want you in Oregon. We can make this happen. Uh you know, as I said, the workforce was a concern, but all these other things, the infrastructure, uh PGE, for example, put in an eight million dollar substation out there to accommodate that facility. The city put in a tremendous amount of uh infrastructure that went in to support that that new company. So I I am a internal optimist. I don't think there's a company out there or an industry out there that we can't accommodate here. We've, we've got, with the resource partners we've got and the community we've got, I I think we can we can build a workforce to accommodate anybody.
I I think that's an interesting observation that, um in fact, I was out for a neighborhood association meeting that actually represents this neighborhood that we're here. And they were doing a planning um session. Um and what do you want the neighborhood to look like? And this neighborhood out here has some of the most fertile, I wanna use the word fertile, uh industrial area that's included. You've, I've got this right here where we're at, right down behind us, and then you've got uh the Kubler Interchange. Fairview Industrial. And so there's, in Ray and I were just talking about this before the evening started. Is is in this particular area, is shovel-ready land an issue? And I don't think it is. I mean, we have buildings that are vacant right here. And so the one question that didn't get asked that night at the, at the neighborhood association that I think we need to be asking ourselves, even within our neighborhood association, if we have those kinds of assets within that neighborhood, jobs eventually are gonna come. So what jobs do we want in this neighborhood? What jobs do we wanna develop? And how, as neighbors, can we help make that happen to maintain the the livability of the ma- neighborhood as well as provide the uh the I I wanna say the the livability uh that you need. You know, you need cash to be able to pay your bills and and put your kids through school and all those things. So uh Ray and I were talking about that, and right here where we're sitting, we have a tremendous opportunity in land and resources that are all avail- already available. Ray, would you say that that that's not a stumbling block right here in our community?
Land is, land is not a stumbling block. In fact, we're seeing more uh requests for proposals uh now than we have for a number of years. The last two quarters, uh we've almost doubled the number of people that are actually looking at us for uh expansion opportunities. And part of that is the available amount, low, low-cost land.
And that's not necessarily the case in the rest of parts of the states where they really have a problem with land use and trying to set aside some developing areas. Other, other thoughts? Is there um, you know, other topics that the regulatory environment or uh we've, we've covered workforce. I had that written down as something that maybe I'd talk about, but it sounds like uh workforce has been answered. Were situations other things?
Well, I have a question um that is around workforce. What I do in my job is I help people find jobs. And so one of the things I do is I'm looking at their skills and how those skills fit into the jobs that are available. And I'm just hearing and seeing a real disconnect between what the community is looking for in skills and those skills that we have available. And how do I coach our uh the population groups that I'm working with um to market them to employers?
Diane, you wanna take a stab at that one?
Uh wow. Um so you, so these are people that have had a hard time. I'm sorry, I I kinda missed a little bit of what you're saying about the population you're working with.
I'm working with two separate, I have worked with two separate population groups. And some of my frustration in working with some of the individuals, um for example, the uh population group that I'm a part of, the fifty-five and older, we have a lot of skills. We do things to upgrade our skills, and we can't find jobs because we're not um for whatever reason. And the other population group that I'm working with are people that have served in the armed forces, have uh come back and don't, they can't support themselves, they're homeless. Uh how to reconnect them within our community? They have skills, but we have to help them deal with some of the issues that they have when they come back from a war zone. We have a lot of talent in our community, a lot of people. But they feel disconnected. And when I'm listening to you talk, I'm hearing you talk about businesses, I'm hearing you talk about minimum wage, and we have these people, all they wanna do is survive.
Yeah, me, on the armed forces issue, and this is something that I realized, cause I've been on the governor's reentry council. And when you say reentry council, you think of people coming out of the prison population. And I had a young man uh in my office who had gone through reentry. He came to visit me and talk to me, cause about his experience and how he could make some suggestions and how we could do that even better. And he pointed out to me that his best friend had just come back from Iraq, the same time he was coming out of prison. And he, he said to me that the similarity, the things that, the issues that they were facing were so similar. And yesterday, we sat through a reentry uh uh presentation. It was the third annual breakfast about reentry here in Marion County and what we're doing. And one of the, the one of, just one thing that they're doing here in Marion County in the reentry issue uh is they're going in to the institution six months before the person is coming out and actually connecting with them, the parole officers. They've reduced, I believe the number was from thirty percent of people who were coming out that would not report down to two percent. And what you just said just struck that chord with me of saying that's, we've gotta find the mentors and the people who can, who can meet those people, whether they're reentering from a foreign country that had been serving on our behalf, meeting them and mentoring them all the way through, so they feel connected. So they feel they can trust somebody to help them do that. And so I'd be interested in sitting down and and talking to you about some of the challenges that you're facing in that and seeing if we could even bring that reentry council, expand that reentry council and some of the resources that we're using even into those other populations, cause they're facing very, very similar things. They're coming back. even into those other populations. Because they're facing very, very similar things. They're coming back. Many times they have no family, they have no friends and they're, they have no job, they have housing issues. All those things are the same as people coming in, reentering from being in corrections at the same time. I don't know about the training issues if you want to address.
Well, let me just say, I'm, I'm really not the expert in those people that are unemployed and looking for jobs. We, our population that we do work with mostly are those that are already employed and we're skilling them up for something different in their company. But I guess, are you saying that you've gone all the avenues of going through all the staffing agencies? You've been to WorkSource Center and taken their placement tests and still have a difficult time? Or that's the, the population is?
Uh, approached staffing agencies and we're actually, are in partnership with one of our staffing agencies. And they've gone to WorkSource Oregon, they've participated in the readiness certification program. I don't remember the exact name of it right now. I myself went through that program.
That's, that's through the military reentry?
No, no, National Career Readiness Certificate at the NCRC.
Which nationally, I guess, a lot of employers are going to start looking at that. So our population groups are doing everything they can to put themselves in a position to become employed. Why they're not becoming employed is what we don't understand because they have the skills.
One of the things I, I could share, I mean, I, I can tell you firsthand that no matter what skills an employee has, there's things that matter more than any of that stuff. And that's attitude and enthusiasm. So part of the training that you're providing for the individuals that you're helping can be to actually provide that, frankly, the charisma in the interview process where they just can't stop smiling. They are so excited to be in that interview and have the opportunity to get this job. And they can express that enthusiasm and that energy and be extremely positive and show that employer that they're going to make their life easier, not harder. If they can do that and convey that attitude and energy, that, that can be better than anything else they could possibly do because any employer will tell you that there's a certain amount of skills frankly, that will have to be customized no matter who they hire. You know, there's a baseline amount of skills that can provide that entry interview, but employers hire for enthusiasm and energy now more than ever.
Thank you.
One of the things I look at in training, what's available out there? One of the things I try to do in the military is I try to get my cooks to become a, a, you know, chefs and different things. So they had, when they came out, they had a train that was always recognized by the civilian industry out there. And I'm wondering about how much our training, I, I look at guys overseas trying to get training prior to coming back. Do we have a media available that these people can use? You know, we have the computers available. Are we looking at being able to provide some means, whether or not it's, you know, critical thinking or anything else? Jason was talking about interview techniques. You know, that's the type of stuff that'd be very good that you could have on YouTube type video available while some kid to watch, goes over there. So when he comes back, he needs to be prepared. He's going to start a year out, year and a half out. He's starting taking these courses and being, being set up and ready to enter the workforce when he does come back because he's always got some certifications and there's a lot of different areas that I don't know if we're really looking at those, the different media available out there that we can really truly use that media and identify what quote skills your businesses need. So then we can try to start, provide that training. You know, a medium these people can use it on, on their schedule, not necessarily, you know, on an instructor's schedule.
Well, I know I'm, I'm not going to probably know all these details, but I know that more and more online training is coming at us all the time, whether it's at the university or at the, at the, at the community college level or even in the high school levels now. And in fact, there's a whole, and a whole online charter school that is, you know, that whole movement is moving. So those resources are being developed. I want to go back to your comment, Jason, and I remember when I was twenty-four years old and the one thing I remember from Dale Carney, Carnegie is to be enthusiastic, you have to act enthusiastic. And I, and I remember them drilling that into me and, and, you know, how many times do you walk by somebody and, and they're, and this is me, in fact, my staff has to remind me and they just look at me and say, thank you for the smile, because I'm not smiling. And as soon as they say that, I start to smile so we can help each other with those types of things. And going into an interview remembering I'm going to be enthusiastic in this interview. I, I don't know what the military has. If you're talking about specifically about the military, we could certainly find out what resources are available if they have some of those things online. And again, what I look for as a legislator is I, I don't look to reinvent the wheel. I look to see who's doing things that are working out there. Like I was talking about the reentry that we're using for people coming out of DOC. Why do we have to reinvent the wheel? Why can't we expand some of those resources? We have a resource center here in, in Salem that has been put together with private funds to help those people for employment and, and other things that they need. And maybe those are some of the same resources, that same resource center could be expanded to use for other populations that are facing some of the same obstacles coming back. So.
Well, you're thinking about decent mechanics or any of that, you know, all those skills are transferable back. As long as they can get quote the certification so they're recognized when they do come back for their training and, and trying to, to, you know, tailor that towards a specific recognizable, you know, what am I trying to say? You know, something that's recognizable.
Transferred into another job, right.
Back, and they understand it's at a certain level. So that when the guy does come back, Soupley Chef is one of the ones that I used to, you know, get my cooks to try to get, because it's recognizable. Now they can go down to a doctor restaurant and they already know, oh, if you got that designation, that means you, you mean something to them.
It's, it's really great you're talking about the restaurant business. That's, that's, I started as a dishwasher when I was sixteen years old and, and still have some restaurants. It's what I do for a living. And it's interesting if a guy, if, if somebody comes in from the Culinary Institute and I want to go back to what you said versus somebody that comes in and says, I'm eager to learn and I'll do whatever it takes to learn. And, and did, I mean, if, if the paper means something, but their whole attitude and their, their desire and all that, I, I mean, I'm going to, I, I'll probably take that person and work with them because I think that I want to give them an opportunity. So I think the certificate's important, but if they, if one had a certificate and the other one didn't and they were both enthusiastic, then they're probably the person with the certificate. So I, I don't ever want to discount the certificate or the training, but our personal relation skills and ability to work as a team and work with other people are, I believe, probably in today's world, even more critical than they may have used to be because we're moving more from manufacturing, although we have some manufacturing that we brought here into the service sector and educational type sector. And we've got to put forth people who know how to collaborate and work together. So any things we can do to help train those skills and teach people and, and this morning we were at, or today we were at family building box lunches. And it, I mean, it starts way with these little, little children and, and helping them be successful because forty percent of your brain is developed when you are born and the other forty percent, up to eighty percent of your brain is developed in the first three years of life. So starting at that age to help these people be successful and then, you know, the things about reading scores in the third grade is going to determine, that's how we determine the future of our prison population. How people read at the third grade. Those are some statistics that are just absolutely amazing. So focusing at that level and then people when they come out, teaching them that their personal skills matter as well as the technical skills that they, they have.
Something that also might help those that you're trying to help find work. One of the best little tricks of the trade, whenever they have a phone interview or are on the phone and are trying to impress someone, have them take out a photo of something they really care about that just forces them, forces them to smile. And they just can't stop smiling the whole time they're looking at that photo. Have them take it out and put it like against something like a class or something while they're on the phone. So they're just smiling during the whole conversation. And that's guaranteed to make a difference.
Great idea.
Yeah. Well, well, we're, any, any of our panel have any other things or any other suggestions? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and maybe have some closing statements. Ray, you want to say anything to close us up here and we'll just come down the line?
Well, I, I, in closing, I would just like to say that from, from our standpoint and what, what we see, you know, as far as recovery and, and new jobs in the economy, it is slowly starting to look better. And, you know, I have for the first time in the last two years, some considerable optimism with some projects that we're working on right now. So if I had anything to say or to, to leave you with, it would be that it's not going to be a three thousand jobs in the next six months, but, but we are seeing some steady improvement in the job market.
Thanks, Diane.
I would just say that listening to what the community needs helps me in deciding some of the classes that we might offer. And so this, that you brought this up, this might be something that we could talk about later. And certainly when I hear from community members in our community education department, that that's what we're looking for. You know, what do people need out in the community so that we can put a training together for that or a workshop?
Thank you.
Yeah, just a final thought would be, you know, we take a lot of pride in, as a Chamber of Commerce and working extremely hard to keep the business community unified. And having twelve hundred businesses in the community that voluntarily are, are part of the chamber is, is a really incredible thing and something we can never take for granted. So as a chamber, you have our commitment to continue innovating, to continue to challenge our employers to think outside the box so they can create more jobs. And to make sure that we do whatever we can to focus on the things that keep our community moving forward and, and thinking positively about what's possible in the future.
Ray, I want to thank our panel tonight and, and thank you for the time you put in, not only tonight, but the full-time, long hours you put in in our community and Ray traveling and around the world or the country, whatever it takes to bring jobs here. And it's been great to be here tonight. I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank CCTV again and, and I want to thank the people here at the Pringle Community and, and that allowed us to use this wonderful facility. If you have some comments and you want to give us some more input, you can email us at rep.kevincameron@state.or.us or you can go to our website at www.repkevincameron.com. And there's, you can sign up for our newsletter there. You can interact with us there. And I really am here to listen and then take those ideas back and try to help the rest of my colleagues. We had a good session, last session, and I think we're going to do that in two thousand and twelve. Collaborate together and come up with solutions that will make our state better. Because those of you that are sitting here, obviously are involved, those of you that are watching obviously are involved. And those of us that are involved will make a difference for those that are coming up, the little ones that are still in school. In fact, my wife is out there teaching preschool, preschoolers every day and they, they are the future and it's great to see them grow and, and they will be the ones that, of course, I'm in that fifty-five and older group that will be paying taxes while I relax a little bit twenty years from now. So I would, I just want to thank you. It's an honor to serve with you at the state Capitol. And this is a, a great time to come out and listen and, and, and hear good things. So thank you very much. And remember, here we are in this little place in Oregon, but we are really important and we can make a difference. So thanks for being here with us tonight.